Good evening. This evening is Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is five thirty P M., and we will start our work session with an update from Mr. Brian McCain, the Chief of Staff.
Thank you, ma'am. A couple of P D updates this past Saturday. They had a car seat check event, saw fourteen cars, seventeen seats were checked, and they actually replaced four of them. So make sure you have some safe car seats for the little ones out there. This week, September fifteenth through the twenty-first is National Co-Responder and Crisis Responder Week. Together, Pueblo Police Department officers work alongside clinicians, including partners at Health Solutions, to appropriately respond to and improve behavioral and mental health outcomes for our community. Just a reminder, it is Chili Fest at the end of the week, so Union Avenue from West B Street to West City Center Drive will be closed starting midnight Thursday, September nineteenth until Sunday, September twenty-second. Please adjust your commuting accordingly and enjoy the Chili and Free Holes Festival. As a reminder, two thousand and twenty-four Creek Week takes place September twentieth through October sixth. There are volunteer opportunities to register as a crew leader for a group at a public or private cleanup site, or as an individual. Schools, families, friends are more than welcome. For more information, please contact via email, A A L I R E S at pueblo.us. And then, as you can see, our new newsletters out, I would ask and urge everybody to take a look at it. It gives updates from the city, and we are featuring department directors in it. And this month, we have Naomi Henning from Purchasing. So it's available on our website at pueblo.us, and then we have printed copies in the mayor's office. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Okay, I have a question for the city clerk. I'm getting a lot of phone calls about the veto. Could you please just explain what the process is to the public so that they understand?
Sure. So after any ordinance, the mayor has the opportunity to veto the ordinance, very similar to the Congress and the President of the United States in that way. So in this instance, the mayor chose to use her veto. And what that means is that this item will come back before city council at the next regular meeting, which will be next Monday night. And there will be no public discussion of the item. It will just be for council to discuss and to allow the mayor to present discussion on why she decided to veto that item. And then council will be able to vote to override the veto. They will be able to decide to take no action. Those are pretty much the only two options. So and then it would need a supermajority or a majority, a supermajority of council, so that will be five votes for it to override the veto.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Appreciate that. I have something that I wanted to talk to council about that weighs really heavy on my heart. We have a ballot measure coming up on the state ballot regarding, it's going to be solidifying the abortion laws. It's going to be adding to the abortion laws. And you know, everybody, it's no secret, two years ago, I ran an ordinance in favor of trying to shut down the clinic that was going to open here. And you know, I got a lot of criticisms and so forth, that people from Texas hijacked me by gunpoint and had me bring this ordinance forward to our community. But in all actuality, it was, this ordinance was introduced to me by our now president, Mr. Aliff, who Pueblo community members brought it to him. He was not active on council at the time. He brought it to me and asked me to move it forward. The thing that really concerns me with the ballot measure coming up for people to decide is that there's not a whole lot of information behind the abortion laws here that the public are even aware of. And so I would, that abortion clinic did open here. One of the very few regulations that the clinics have are to have a licensed physician in place in order to open. The doctor that opened the facility soon died three months after the facility was opened, and that facility operated and still did procedures while they were in search of a new licensed physician. And it was approximately nine months before they found a licensed physician. I, in doing this, a lot of education took place for myself in running that ordinance. And what I, what was, I think it's really important for the public to understand whether you're pro-life or you're pro-choice, that there are nothing, there's nothing in place that protects women of this procedure. There is, they don't have to keep statistics on if someone is injured, permanently injured. They don't have to, by law, they're not required to keep statistics. By law, you don't have to be a licensed medical professional to perform as an abortion in the state of Colorado. A lot of people who have attacked me on this matter didn't even realize that you have up and, you know, through the ninth month to make a decision to terminate the pregnancy. We have some of the most radical abortion laws here in the state of Colorado. And in the end, they don't protect women's health and safety. So you could have the legalization of abortion without, with basically what they refer to as back alley practices, especially if you don't have to be a licensed medical professional to perform one. And so when people are voting on this issue to now open it up to being publicly funded, abortions are not publicly funded at this time unless there's a serious set of circumstances or require that insurances have that in their policy. Think about the things that in this irresponsible legislation of legalization of abortion, that they are not considering the safety of women. I mean, there are more regulations for the animal shelter than there are for an abortion clinic. And so I think that people are not aware of that. They should be aware of that. They should consider that. And we, as a city, have recently taken measures to put more regulations in place for the lodging industry because of their, you know, irresponsible practices. We criticize legislature all the time for the decriminalizing and, you know, allowing criminals to get away with things. We are putting procedures in place to get the homeless camps cleaned up. And we have a abortion facility that I don't know if anybody's driven by lately that has weeds up to your waistline you're at. And that used to be a really well manicured building when the Potestio family owned that building. But its code enforcement should be out there asking them to clean all their weeds and so forth. But if you know the history of the family that runs the building, and you look at their buildings in their other states, they also are very subpar. And so it, maybe this is something that council would be interested in educate, wanting to be educated on. I mean, after all, it is in Mr. Gomez's area, and I'm sure that he would want safe, safe practices for women that are going there. Most recently, because they don't have to give data or statistics, we don't really know who's treated there. We don't know what trimester they're treated in. We don't know how many abortions are being done there. But most recently, Carhart the Fourth, who runs the facility, stated that forty-seven percent of his patients are from Texas, just Texas alone. Is Pueblo contributing or accepting abortion tourism here in Pueblo? There's just a lot of things that I think that are unknown to the public. And if the public, whether you're pro-life or you're pro-choice, that who wouldn't be concerned about women's health and safety? And if the state legislation hasn't looked into that or cared about it, or considered it, or mandated it, do we really want those practices here in Pueblo? Do we want to be the dumping ground for irresponsible legislation? And so we would have to probably make a decision before the election, because I'm going to tell you that when it comes out on the ballot, everybody is like so pro-choice that they don't even look at the decisions they're making and what they're leaving these women to have to suffer at the hands of whoever it is that's performing the abortion. Because, like I said, in the state, you don't have to be a licensed medical professional. You could go back to any of the videotape from two years ago when I did this. And I asked that to the Parkview doctor that was interviewing or that was speaking, and I asked him if he knew, and he said he had just recently found that out. So it's not things that are being made up, but it's something that this community, we want to keep a clean, healthy, safe community for our, the members of our community. And I know that it's a touchy subject, but when it comes to women's health and safety, I think that we as legislators and the administration need to consider the harm that they could suffer, which we'll never know about it because they don't have to report anything that goes wrong there, not like you would in another type of facility. So anyways, that's my, my say for the evening. And I am prepared to bring some information forward for council if you're willing to listen. Okay, all right. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, absolutely. Counselor Ma, absolutely not. I object to this full-heartedly. The fact that we are even discussing is beyond frustrating to me. Why this is considered city business? I, the fact that we're considering this as city biz, I think a complete misuse of our time, our resources. I'm not done talking. Why council would even allow this to be a conversation again? I, it would be beyond me. We are approaching budget season. We are, you know, crime is always talked about in public forum. The fact that we would be talking about something that is codified in the state law that women have access to any sort of reproductive healthcare. It, I don't want to discuss this. I don't want to talk about it again. The voters have made it clear that they, that women deserve access to any sort of reproductive healthcare. And I want to correct the record that the abortion within the nine months is not allowable per the state law. So just because you can say something on the mic, Counselor Ma, doesn't mean that at all. So no, I don't, I don't, I'm asking council not to.
Well, you know, we always don't agree on everything, Counselor Martinez. And if I have people, counselors here that are shaking their heads and wanting to hear something, you know, since I had done this last, this is no longer under the jurisdiction of the United States. It's under the jurisdiction of each state. And as these legislators make these laws and rules within our community, we are suffering the fallout. And so, again, I'm not trying to make abortion illegal. But if we have the right as a home rule city to say that we don't want it here within, and it's not codified, they're codifying it on November fifth, if that ballot measure is put through. And so we can go ahead. You can say what you want to say. I could say what I want to say. But I will, I will, I will bring a legal team in to discuss it. And I will bring the experts in to discuss it, and we'll leave it there. And if you don't want to listen, I guess you don't have to participate in the work session. But if my council, the majority of my council wants to hear it, then that's, that's what a democracy is all about. Anything else?
I want to hear.
Yes.
I, I want to hear a verbal yes or no from all of the counselors who want to have this go forward, because I can't see, I'm not asking, I want, I want a yes or no on who is willing to listen and to even entertain this conversation more. No, I want to hear individually by all the other counselors who want to hear more information about it.
Um, I can go, if they want to do that, we can do that, Counselor Martinez. But guess what? It only takes one of us individually to bring forward whatever any one of us wants to bring forward, for everybody to listen to, whether they want to listen to it or not. That is what this is about. So I have a nodding of the heads, and so if that's the case, then I will bring it forward. And if they don't want to nod their heads, guess what? I can bring it forward. Right? Counselor Flores?
Yeah. Counsel, Counselor Martinez, you were breaking up so badly, but I think I was catching what you were saying. And I agree with you. You know, just so everybody's clear, we keep, we keep stepping out on the edge constantly into areas that we don't have any, any say-so. This is basically something that the state of Colorado is going to do. They will codify it. We don't have any power within this city council to circumvent anything that they're doing. Can we talk about it? Yeah, we, this is the United States. We can talk about any subject, but we have so many important things that we should be doing on this particular issue. It is legal in the state of Colorado to get an abortion. It is legal for this clinic to be in business. It is also illegal on their part to do anything that would be detrimental to their license and not abide by the rules that are, that govern any kind of clinic. I think they are under a set of rules. If we want to talk about this subject just to get informed, that's one thing. But this council does have no power to be able to circumvent and do anything that would give us the power to shut them down or to set up any kind of impediment. The state is clear. I'm clear personally. But I think those are choices that, that people have for themselves. And here we are trying to, you know, stick our nose into people's personal business. I just think it's a topic, there's so many important things that we should be doing. There's nothing, there's nothing to be gained by this, other than to have another packed house, and we can have pro and, you know, pro abortion, and the, we can have that, that argument again. But it gets us nowhere. That's my last comment.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Flores. And, and also, Counselor Martinez's input. We do have one regulation, one of the, one main regulation is that you cannot operate without an active licensed physician and a dead licensed physician for several months not being, not, not keeping, they had, they did not have it. So they were breaking the law. So they could, and obviously, there were no consequences because there was nobody to report to. So I would like to hear more about it. And I would, if we do, if we can, if we can do things because people, businesses aren't paying their fees, businesses aren't applying, following our regulations, businesses, anybody, anybody's not following our regulations, and we're taking action to make it a better community, then I, abortion, I'm not arguing whether abortion is legal or not, but I will tell you that it is unregulated practices. And that is very concerning when it comes to the health and safety of women.
That's not, so that is not true. Abortion is highly regulated. Abortion providers are licensed by boards, just like all other providers are. They are regulated.
We'll see, we'll see, we'll see how that works when they come and they explain it. So.
Not will be, come from Ma, they're facts. That's how the actual law is.
Well, then I guess you'll be right when they come and they explain it to the public. What, if you're right, then what, what's the worry? Okay. All right. So we'll move on with our first guest, because we're going to get back to the agenda. And our first guest tonight is from H S P P R Update with Ms. Kelly Likes and Julie Justman. Thank you, ladies.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Likes. I am the interim president and C E O of the Humane Society of the Pike's Peak Region. I'm joined by my colleague Julie Justman, who's our Vice President of Operations. We're here today as your partner and your service provider to share an update on some challenges that we're facing, some sheltering data, solutions to reduce the animal population that we are funding through individual donations and grants, and an animal law enforcement update. As you can see, we're experiencing a significant increase in the number of animals coming into our Pueblo shelter. In two thousand and twenty-one, our organization was handling five thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven animals at our Pueblo location. In two thousand and twenty-three, that number skyrocketed to eight thousand three hundred and sixteen. This year, we're on track to handle more than ninety-one hundred animals from the Pueblo community. This is a forty-three percent increase in just three years. That's thirty-two hundred animals. Each year, we're seeing a fifteen percent or more increase in the number of animals entering the shelter, and this is just not sustainable. Because of shelter capacity, we need to transfer animals out of Pueblo. We utilize the resources of our Colorado Springs Shelter and transfer animals to Boulder, Denver, Denver, and Golden. That's about twenty-five percent of the animals entering the facility that need to be transferred. In two thousand and twenty-three, our shelter handled ninety-three percent of all the animals entering a shelter or rescue in Pueblo. As an open admission shelter, we take any and all animals that come through our doors. So here's some challenges that we're facing. We already mentioned the thirty-two hundred animals that we're seeing come into the shelter. Of course, we're in an inflationary environment, and we're seeing an increase in the cost of supplies, especially medical supplies for animals that we're treating. There's an increased cost of living everywhere. Most animal welfare organizations are limiting the animals that they serve, so they are doing more managed admission services while we are continuing to keep our doors open to make sure animals have a place to go. And then, of course, lack of access to veterinary care. That's leading to pet overpopulation. We have a veterinary desert here in Pueblo, so we have eight clinics to serve about a hundred and sixty thousand people and their pets. That's also leading to some increased animal welfare concerns that are being investigated by our A L E officers, and Julie's going to talk more about that as well.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about an update from our organization. And I'm just going to talk about a few of the proactive efforts that we're doing to try and help manage through the increased intake that we're experiencing in Pueblo. Some of the things that we've done, I don't want to read slide, everything on the slide for you, but adjusting fees for service, updating legislation for, to reflect cost of care increase that we did in two thousand and twenty-two through coming here in front of you. We also implemented payment plans for public services this year. We've been working really hard to gather a group of organizations working together in the Pueblo area to create a spay and neuter coalition and to better collaborate and coordinate services to the Pueblo community. Just a few of the entities are Pueblo Spay and Neuter Now, Bergen Spay and Neuter Alliance, the San Luis Valley Spay and Neuter Alliance, Res Dog Rescue, and just most recently, joining us is a Southern Colorado Spay and Neuter Clinic. So what we hope to do is just really increase access to our community, to spay and neuter, because we are seeing an increase in local puppies. Whereas in two thousand and eighteen, I can tell you that we didn't see hardly any local puppies coming into our shelter. So there's definitely been a huge shift in what our community has access to related to spay and neuter, so that we're starting to see that in seeing puppies coming into our facility. We're also soliciting grant funding to help with public spay and neuter and other wellness services. We get funding from the Colorado Pet Overpopulation Fund, which is the tax, Colorado tax, check off. We have been invited to apply for an incubator grant through the PetSmart charities, which very few organizations in the United States get that opportunity. So we're very excited to be able to do so. It's not a guaranteed grant of funding, but we get an opportunity. So the door is open, and we're going to, we're going to do our best to obtain funding through that entity. And also, the Animal Assistance Foundation helps us. Our wellness clinic over at the PetSmart store, we're targeting to have that open more days a week. Currently, right now, we're open four days a week. And then our wellness clinic in Colorado Springs is open the opposite end of the week, so that if people need wellness services and we're not open here in Pueblo, we can direct them to Colorado Springs if they can't find any other services within the, within the local community. We also offer discounts to our Pueblo residents. And we're working on increasing access to spay and neuter right through that clinic. We're limited to space, so we can do cats and smaller dogs and puppies, but we're unable to do large dogs there. There's just no space to put them for recovery after surgery. So we're going to be testing a large dog event on, I believe it's October fifth. We're going to be using our mobile unit at our shelter and then recovering animals in our temperature-controlled. There's a barn behind the shelter where we can keep those public animals separate from the shelter animals. And so that'll be a good test for us to see if we can increase and ramp up opportunity for spay and neuter another way outside of our Pueblo Wellness Clinic. Other things that we're doing is youth education. We have a youth education manager that covers both locations for Colorado Springs and Pueblo. And whoops, just lost the screen. Just increasing our donor engagement. We also offer responsible pet ownership classes. Those are court ordered, and we've done ten of those so far in two thousand and twenty-four. As far as animal law enforcement statistics, our first quarter, which is typical, that we'd have a lot fewer calls for service in the first quarter. You have not such great weather, so there are not as many animals out running around and whatnot. So our increase between quarter one and quarter two for calls for services there on the screen. And then, but year over year, we are starting, I'm starting to get concerned a bit that we're seeing an increase for calls for service between twenty-three and twenty-four, and that's through quarter two. We've seen a ten percent increase in calls for service in the field. And that's for Pueblo and Pueblo County together. Just highlight a few types of calls for service and the difference between two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. You can see our aggressive animal calls for service are going up, as well as the cruelty, animal calls that are associated with cruelty to animals. And those calls can be pretty labor-intensive, because they often take multiple calls to the location to resolve them. It's not just a one and done. Oftentimes, we have to go back and make sure that we're speaking to the right people. We're contacting the owners multiple times to make sure that whatever we've asked them to do to come into compliance with the care for their animals being done, and the animals are being cared for properly. Other things that our animal enforcement team is, are doing to be more proactive in the community is just, they have a real commitment to public safety and being out in the community, being there for the citizens when they need them, making sure that as much as possible, they have positive community interactions. One thing that I think is great that they do is they have a follow-up program for victims of dog bites, where they're contacting them and checking in on them. They have stuffed animals if the victim is a, is a child, and just really trying to take care of our citizens when they're going through something traumatizing. They participate in public events and education. They also have been working on some other proactive things, like a suspended penalty or a fix-it ticket. So if somebody receives a citation, they can actually have that voided if they take care of, say, a licensing violation. And they also have coupons that they can hand out in the field when somebody appears to be in great need. They can give them a voucher to go to our wellness clinic and get services for vaccines or, or something else that would be minor or wellness-related. And also collaborating with local agencies such as police department, sheriff's office, health department, and whatnot. I did also want to mention that there's a ballot initiative coming on the November ballot. It is ballot initiative one forty-five. It is related to veterinary professional associates or mid-level practitioners. And what this will do, if it passes, is it will allow for a mid-level practitioner in the field of veterinary medicine. This would be a master's law. This would be a master's level degree in clinical studies and will have to pass licensing and testing and whatnot. So that they can actually be like a nurse practitioner or a physician's assistant in, in human medicine. And this is seen as a great opportunity to increase access to care in the veterinary community. Veterinary colleges, there are more coming online, but it still takes time to graduate the graduate veterinarians and at really high cost. They graduate with anywhere from 200 to $250,000 in, in student debt to be a veterinarian. This mid-level practitioner will not, it'll be a master's level. It won't take as long to graduate them. It's also seen as a career pathway for veterinary technicians. Many veterinary assistants and veterinary technicians burn out an average of three to five years working in the field. And if they don't want to go into management, they often leave the field because there's not really any place for them to go. This would be a career pathway that they could progress into being a veterinary professional associate. So when it comes out in the blue book, please, please read it over. We are excited that this made it to the ballot and we would ask you to read it over and, and if you have any questions about what that would, how that would impact, say, our program, we'd be happy to answer for the questions about that. The one thing to mention, that the professional associations are not for this ballot measure. But it does not force any private entity or business to hire that type of person if they, if it comes to fruition, but it would certainly increase access to care because these people could be doing things that the veterinary, veterinarian delegates them to do. So they could be taking care of patients and doing some diagnosing and prescribing that while the veterinarian's in surgery or things like that. So we see it as a, as a huge opportunity for us in the future if it does pass. And happy to answer, we're both happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, ladies. Any questions? Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, I've been always wondering about the operation here in reference to, I've had a couple of, one ends with sort of dog folks, one good, one not so good. And I just got to get some information for myself. All, all your officers that attend to things that are here in Pueblo, do they ever come from Springs? They're all here.
The ones that are currently hired and working in Pueblo.
Has that ever been the case, though?
Yes, if we run shorthanded, but that's one great thing about having economy of scale and having other locations. If we run shorthanded, we can call for officers to offer them overtime to cover shifts. So that is an opportunity that we think is a positive one. But they are all trained similarly and are aware of the local ordinances and also have access.
For you guys too, I get it. I can just relate to your story out when I was doing, I was an investigator for a while and they went out to this property way out. And I walked in the backyard and it was domestic and I was supposed to go find a shed in the back, walked halfway through there. And as I saw it, back of, the hair in the back of my neck, I'm surrounded like about six pit balls. Got my attention, believe me. And I was just praying to God they ate already. And I had asked for backup. This is several years ago. I had asked for backup and it never showed. That was then. But then recently, I can tell you a good story. And this maybe was different than, I had a dog that jumped, I don't know, it's meant to be a dog magnet. The dog jumped into my car. It was like from Spanky in our gang, had the big black eye. Oh, it just broke. I have a full-size shepherd that I got from the, from the paws. I got a, another dog named Mickey that jumped in my car, McDonald's or Husky, you know, put a pin in the neck, those guys were. But what I learned, I, and I ran and I tried to find your loc, it's hard to find that location sometimes and you're trying to beat the clock because I knew if I didn't get it over there, I was going to end up keeping this dog. And I did, I just didn't want another dog. When I got over there, it was a young gal that was just leaving. And I don't know, I should have got her name, but she couldn't have been kinder. Blonde-headed, slight gal. And she just relayed all my fears about this dog was going to be taken care of. My God, what a job she did. And I felt so much better than I did my job of trying to get this, keep this dog from getting killed on the highway because he was on Northern Avenue. And just knowing that her reception alone, if that's the change you guys have made, good for you. Because she was incredible, for what it's worth. And then another thing, if we, if you ever, if you listen to council long enough, you'll have our president, who, what does he preach every time he closes the show? Spade your dogs, new to your dogs, every time. So I don't know how we can get better at that. Unless Mark, you got some more ideas, but I, but I appreciated him. He reminds everybody every night, so. But I appreciate what you guys are doing. It's not an easy job. You got, I got it. But maybe there's some answers down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flores.
Yes, thanks for that report. This new, this ballot issue with this new degree. If it passes, i- is this something that people already hold this degree and they could, they could, or is it going to have to go through the cycle of going through the whole, all the courses that need to be taken? You would, you would think that right now, somebody that didn't make it quite to be a vet would be close to getting something like this.
I'm sorry.
No, that was my question.
It's a great question. If this measure passes, it would be effective January 1, 2026, with first graduates expected to come online in 2027. The curriculum is, is, is drafted by Colorado State University. There's a lot of hoops that colleges have to jump through to get things, a certain level of approved and whatnot, but the curriculum is drafted. And I think that it's, it's most of the way of being there. But they can't roll it out unless they can say to a student, there is a job for you to have. If Colorado passes this measure, it will be the first state in the United States to do so. We do know that Florida is also in line to bring this forward to their legislature. They have a different way of how they pass things, but they are also looking at it as well.
This is really due to the vet shortage that they can't seem to solve. So that, you know, at some point, we, we're going to be relegated to hiring people like this. Otherwise, we'll have no one. So I'm, I'm happy that it's on there. I never thought about this question in my head until this past Saturday, I was at Sam's Club. And it was weird because there was this couple and they had three dogs in the basket. And they were walking around Sam's Club trying to sell these three dogs. And they were, they were beautiful dogs and you could tell they were being taken care of. They were just so healthy looking and, and the folks seemed all right, but they didn't have any qualms about going around asking people. My question has to do with breeders. It, I, I don't hear much about that, but there has to be people that, there's ads in the paper, there are ads on social media of people that are breeding dogs and selling them. And what, what is your assessment about whether that is an issue, whether there's problems that are created with people that aren't taking care of the dogs? What can you tell me about that segment of the animal population, both but specifically with dogs, I think more than, than cats, although cats also can be bred, I guess, for.
Yeah, they don't, they don't, they don't need much encouragement to multiply. What I can say is that it, it can be a way for people to make money to backyard breed. In the city limits of Pueblo, there is a requirement for litter permit for them to do so. It is also illegal for them to be in parking lots selling puppies. So if that, if you see that again, don't hesitate to give us a call and we can, we can respond. A lot of times they're gone before we get there, but we do look into that. There are responsible breeders out there in, in the community and the state. If they breed over a certain number of, of litters, they then have to have a state license and go through the same PACFA Pet Animal Care Facilities Act regulations. Not the same regulations, but it's under the same umbrella that we have to comply to. So it, there's, there are regulations out there and we're one of the only states in the United States that has those type of regulations. So we are, we are lucky in the fact that there, you won't see puppy mills in Colorado because of that ordinance and, and that law. But it is, people can breed their dogs in the backyard and make a few hundred dollars. And in this economic climate, I think you would tend to see more of that. And in some cases, those pets are not often vaccinated or have any, you know, the, the puppy shots coming up. So we do, we have been experiencing increased parvovirus coming into the shelter, which is, you know, can be very deadly for puppies if their, if their mother was unvaccinated, then they are unvaccinated. So it, it definitely impacts us. And we don't have a, a law that, that bans people from breeding, but we do require them to have a litter permit.
My last question has to do with the statistics that just, we've seen this spike. And after COVID, there, there's a lot of weird stuff that happened, not just in, you know, with animal shelters, but with lots of other businesses. And do you see this as an anomaly or do you really, or is this kind of a pattern nationwide? Or what, what do you, how do you analyze this from a macro basis and then our situation here in Pueblo? And what is happening in Colorado Springs too?
Well, Colorado Springs is experiencing, their, their numbers have flattened out. They did see a bit of a spike in 2022. It started to flatten out in 2023. Pueblo's not returned to normal, so to speak. And I, I feel strongly that this is a lot due to the lack of access to veterinary care and spay and neuter. People just, even if they want to and they have the ability to pay to go to a veterinarian, oftentimes they're having to go into Colorado Springs to have their pets seen. Or if they're not able to do that, they just don't get care. And we're just seeing people not taking care of spay and neuter because they can't, not, maybe not because they don't want to, but because either they can't afford it or they can't access it locally. So that's what our coalition is about, to really coordinate efforts to get more access to spay and neuter specifically and wellness, meaning vaccines, core vaccines, things like that to, to our citizens and maybe start to help turn this, turn this ship around again, back to kind of where we were pre-COVID.
Let's hope that happens. Thank you so much.
Also, I want to put a pitch out there for Whisker Ball coming up November 9th. We'll make sure that you get an invitation and we'd love to see you all there.
Just a follow-up.
I just want to commend you guys for the great work you do over there. I took a tour and the creativity that you guys have there, you know, the use of space, what you guys do, what the resources you do have is very phenomenal. I encourage more people to try to volunteer and help as much as you can. I know you guys were talking about a foster program and there's been kind of a lack of foster homes for people to help. So if anybody out there, you know, you don't have, want to have a long commitment, or a long-term commitment to a pet, you just want to do it for a short term and know there's always help that can be provided. You know, pets are fun, but you know, if you don't want to make that commitment where you eventually end up contributing to the problem, feel free to, you know, help out in the short term, I'd say. And then Roger wants to bring up internship programs, so I'll bring it up for him. Do you guys offer any sort of internship programs besides those child programs you were talking about or any paid positions or anything with the college currently?
We currently partner with Pima. And we do have interns that, I don't know that we have any right now, but we do extern and internships with Pima Medical Institute for their veterinary assistant programs. And we'd love to hear from any other organizations out there that have anything similar. We are always open to partnerships like that, that will help people with their career pathways and also help us.
And then the last question I wanted to ask is, you showed a pretty high increase in animal cruelty calls. Do you know if those are home responses or traditionally people that might not be housed?
I would, just as a guess, and I could ask our team to get those specifically for you. I would guess that most of those are actually home, calls to homes.
I was just curious because of several emails I've gotten, people directing concerns towards me that I just pointed in your direction. So I was just curious what you guys had statistics on that.
Yeah, I, I can find out if we do get that, that deep into knowing how we can pull that out for you. But I, I feel like most of them are actually to homes. Homes and mobile homes, apartment complexes, so single family homes.
Counselor Latino.
Thank you, Madam President. It's a very important entity in this community. I remember several years ago I got involved, Mr. Flores, God bless him. They were ready to move it out of here. And everything was going to be in the Springs and Pueblo is its own entity. It's its own city. It's the home of heroes and we absolutely need that facility. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, just a follow-up. Do you have any numbers in reference to veteran students that are in the Pueblo Springs and the surrounding areas, simply because we have colleges that are doing, some doing pretty well, some have a lot of money in the bank. And if you can't pay them, pay them through college credit. There's got to be a way. I've done this through the seeds program. And it, it's really successful. I don't know if you ever considered that, if you need to, I've done it a long time ago and I'm telling you, you give somebody three credits these days, you're talking about a lot of money. So I don't know if you've looked at that, but just for what it's worth.
We do offer that as a program. So through our volunteer program, you can actually do an unpaid internship and we've had people do that for animal care specifically, which is a huge help for us to be able to get the animals cared for.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, ladies. We appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next on tonight's agenda is the Pueblo Memorial Airport Update with Mr. Pedrosa. He's the Director of Aviation. Welcome, Mr. Pedrosa.
Good evening, counselors, mayor. So a few weeks back, I was visiting with the mayor. We were talking all things airport and pretty exciting things going on at the airport currently. So the mayor's encouraged me to get in front of you folks and, and kind of get you up to speed on what's been going on and we just feel like, you know, knowledge is power and want to let you guys know what's happening at the airport and how much, I guess, excitement is going on around the Pueblo Memorial Airport. So tonight's work session, again, I'm Greg Pedrosa. I'm the Director of Aviation. We'll get underway. I prepared a real brief PowerPoint presentation just to kind of, again, get you up to speed on what's happening at the airport. So it's going to kind of be a Airport 101 opportunity here. The handout I handed you will be a visual aid for later. For now, we're going to start with getting to know your airport. Then we'll start, we'll, we'll dovetail into a current airport update and then we'll take a look at what's the future holds for Pueblo Memorial Airport. So as many of you know or don't know at this point, Pueblo Airport used to be the Pueblo Army Air Base. In July of 1942, the World War II was, was underway and, and we needed to play our part as, as a Southern Colorado entity. So it took them 90 days to build what was then known as the Pueblo Army Air Base. By August of that year, troops were stationed here and it was a full-fledged army, army base. October of 1942, they started with the Heavy Bomb Squadron training extensively for B-24 and B-29 aircraft. So there's a picture of the B-24 that's on display at the Pueblo Memorial, or Pueblo Wisebroad Aircraft Museum currently. Interesting, a real interesting aircraft to visit if you haven't been to the airport museum, the Wisebroad Aircraft Museum. I encourage you to do so. It's a lot of great opportunity to get some history there, especially of the Pueblo Air Base. So the Pueblo Memorial Airport was born in July of 1948 after the, the culmination of the World War II. The land and the infrastructure was quick claim deed to the city with the intent of operating a commercial service airport. Even today, we still see those strong ties and partnership with our military. Currently, we have a staff of four admin, 10 full-time employees and one part-time employee that keeps us compliant with all the FAA regulations and TSA criteria and providing a safe and efficient means for Pueblo community to connect with the national aviation infrastructure. We also have multiple partners on our airfield, including some flight schools and a, basically a gas station for jets that are crossing the country. They'll land in Pueblo and refuel. Pueblo seems to be a very convenient stop on a lot of these cross-country air, plane trips. They'll stop in at our Freeman Jet Center, Pueblo. And they are known for their hospitality and their outstanding fuel price and amenities that come with being loyal customers to them. They really do, they really do appreciate their customers and incentivize them to continue to patronize their business. So what's currently happening here at the airport now? EAS is a word you've probably heard here recently. It stands for Essential Air Service. Over the last two years, we've had an essential air service airline servicing Pueblo with a Pilatus eight-seat aircraft, prop aircraft, to connect our community to Denver. to connect our community to Denver through DIA. And of course, once you get to DIA, you can go wherever you need to. But that, that airline has proved to be, well, they, they've faced some challenges in providing reliable, dependable service, on-time service. So the DOT had opened up the window, the Department of Transportation, the Federal Department of Transportation, opened up the window for us to solicit for bids for a replacement airline. We were very fortunate in the fact that we got six airlines put in a bid with intent to provide service to our Pueblo community through the Pueblo Airport. This was somewhat, somewhat unheard of in the aviation industry. Usually one or two, or the, you know, the incumbent gets the, the contract to continue service. At this point, Southern Airways, who is our incumbent, has declined to, or they, they rescinded their proposal. So we are now faced with four, five airlines, two of which I did not put on here because we, we just, they put a great bid and proposal. But the top three at this point seem to be Breeze Airways, SkyWest and Denver Air Connection. Breeze Airways is a little bit out of the box type of a, of a proposal as they are proposing round-trip service to Las Vegas and to Phoenix. Now, those are different hubs that I've seen in my 13-plus years at the airport. We've always gone to Denver. We've always gone to. I take that back. When I started, Allegiant was here and they were going back and forth to, to, to Las Vegas. But that lasted just the, the one year that, that first year I had started. So that being said, Allegiant did a very good, they, they saw a good passenger in planements. They got a lot of passengers on those flights. And there are some, some folks from Breeze Airways were around and a part of Allegiant at that time. So they understand the ability of Pueblo community to fill a plane and go to Vegas on a regular basis. So they put a proposal in specifically with that destination in mind, splitting it between Las Vegas and Phoenix. Again, to still give us some connectivity to the nationwide aviation infrastructure. So the other two, SkyWest and Denver Air Connections, are still offering the traditional, kind of what we are used to, service of going back and forth to Denver. And of course, you know, when, when you start talking about how much is that going to cost our community, you know, per, per passenger, per seat? You have to look and see, well, it would be worth it just to drive, but then drive, take that time to pay for parking while you're up there. All of those things are in consideration. So we are hopeful that if SkyWest or Denver Air Connections is chosen to keep us connected through DIA, that their price reflects a very competitive and a very rational price point that we would choose to fly versus drive and pay for parking. So the other amenities for us, again, to connect out of Pueblo is our, our real quick TSA line. It would be a little bit busier if we had Breeze Airways because they have a larger aircraft. But still, you're parking right in front of the terminal, you're walking right in and you're getting right in the TSA line. So and parking currently is free, but depending on where we go with our air service, we may have to charge a minimal, in the past, it used to be $3, but maybe a $5 a day type of parking registration, we'll call it, to where it's maybe on a kiosk. We just don't have the infrastructure to, to put a gate guard down and you put your ticket in like a typical, when you think of parking at an airport. So we would have to get creative and find a way to, to do some sort of charge for parking if that's where we end up going. I mentioned passenger in planements as a key element to our successful airport operations. And I, I bring that up because I'd like you folks to understand that the FAA does pay for a lot of our infrastructure improvements when we're talking about our runways and our taxiways, infrastructure. That number of funding monies comes based on how many passengers we get to buy a ticket and fly out of Pueblo. There's always been a magic number of 10,000 in planements. If we get 10,000 people to fly out of Pueblo every year, we reach a million-dollar-plus milestone for FAA funding. So that's our, our top tier. Through this new FAA Reauthorization Act that just passed here in 2024, there's a little bit more of a sliding scale there. So if we don't quite hit 10,000, we will still get some funds, but of course, we want to go after the 100%. We want to get the, the full million to, to keep our airport operating safely and, you know, keep all our pavement in good condition. So we do a lot of promotional, we do a lot of banging the drum for Fly Pueblo, Fly Pueblo. And it makes a lot of sense for us to consider which of those essential air service partners are going to work with our community so that we can reach those important milestones. So again, the FAA money, it's, it's really nice that the FAA gives us money, but they also tell us where to spend it. So through our, our capital improvement program, we sit with the FAA. We line out our, our, our projects for the next five years at a time. And then they decide, or they allow us to spend that in plainment funds on, think of it as like the most deteriorated pavement, when we just checkbox it every year that we're going to, we're using money for this. Then next year, we're going to use the money for this. And then next year, we'll use the money for this. If the FAA determines that there's, a project is worthy enough, then they can add what they call discretionary funds to the pot. And we can do a larger than a million-dollar project, but it is basically at their discretion, which is why those are called discretionary funds. So again, those are all through the FAA. We're currently doing some improvement projects at the airfield. We just got our new, our new pavement on our primary runway. Again, that's two miles long, 150 foot wide of asphalt, stressed asphalt, so airplanes can, can come and go without, you know, stressing it. It, it's made with a solid base and it is going to be grooved. We're in the middle of getting all that grooved now, so we can call that project complete. Again, FAA funded with discretionary funds, entitlement funds and bill funds to the tune of almost $10 million project. So that was local contractors, local truck drivers. You know, bringing all that to our community and like our engineers were from out of town. So they came down and stayed at the hotels, ate at the restaurants, you know, during the project too. So it was, i- in my opinion, it was, it was a good project to see and have that money spent here in our community. Upcoming is pavement ramp update. We're going to do some improvements to our pavement ramp. Again, these are just areas that we've outlined in our capital improvement program schedule. Again, in a five-year look ahead, we noticed that there's some ramp space that is deteriorated and it needs to be updated. So that's where this money will go to in our next round of project funding from the FAA. And then, of course, we're going to build some tea hangers. Some of our friends on the airport and folks who, whose voice we hear quite a bit, that we know it's a deficiency there. Tea hanger availability across the state is, is need. So we're going to build some city-owned tea hangers and we'll be able to recoup some of that through some revenue. And it's mostly going to be FAA funded, but again, we'll have a revenue stream there on the airfield. So most importantly, a few years ago, we did a master plan that outlined some of our available space and ability. And we did a survey of what our airport needed for, for future growth. The master plan is in place and as long as projects adhere to what we have in the master plan, we can continue to investigate and FAA would fund those projects. So a master plan is available if anybody would like to, to see what that looks like. Okay, so what's on the horizon for Pueblo Airport? Well, next year, September 27th and 28th of 2025, we're in the, we're in the planning stages for Pueblo Wings of Pride Air Show, featuring the, the Thunderbirds, the Air Force Thunderbirds. So that's going to be exciting. I think for some of you who may have been around last year or so, we had some discussion about potentially bringing some races. They decided to go to a different community, but we are still going to capitalize on the excitement that was brought up through all of that process and really highlight the, the capability of our airport to have an air show. So 2025, 27, 28th of September, big air show, Pueblo, you're all invited. What else is coming up? Our new partnering airline, again, another opportunity to have a outstanding partner to keep us connected. The FAA has done some surveying, initial surveying and some citing to invest in a new control tower on our airfield. And that's also going to be brought to us by our bill funds. So currently, the height of the tower is too short. So they're looking to scoot it back about 200 feet from its, south of its current position and make it almost 200 foot tall. So again, another example of F, the FAA willing to invest in our community and see, because they see value in our airport and what we're doing there for the national air system. So and then what I provided to you in a handout and Counselor Martine, is if you're still on, I apologize, I don't have this digital. But what, what I have in front of you there is a proposal we had done a few years ago to remodel the terminal and put some restrooms on the concourse side, so beyond TSA. Currently, once our, once our passengers go through TSA, get pat down, get screened, they don't have restrooms on that side. They'd have to come back out through TSA to use restroom if, if the call of nature, you know, demands. Then they have to go back through TSA again, providing that interaction yet again with the TSA officers. So we put together a concourse expansion, a terminal renovation or upgrade for interior design. And it would also include an outside facade upgrade. You'll see those in the photos I provided you and a little bit of a cost estimate there. That's a shovel-ready project sitting on, on my shelf there, sitting on our shelf there in, in the admin office. We are attempting to go through the FAA channels to get it paid for through some airport terminal project grants. Very competitive as every airport in the nation is vying for those, those funds. We are on third opportunity now, or this is the fourth opportunity. We've had three strikes at this point where we, they've said, yeah, that, that's a great plan. But we're no thank you at this time. So we are really encouraging everybody, if whatever strings we can pull from our friends in legislation at any level, let them know that Pueblo needs a facelift and some bathrooms. And we, we've already submitted for this year, round four. Round five will be next year and it'll be the final opportunity for us to, to get this project done. Unless we can find something local to invest in our own airport as well. Like I said, I, I see the FAA constantly investing in us and we are very dependent on those funds to keep us safe and operational. It, it would be nice to see if we had that same mentality with local to get that. If, if all other, other avenues fail, I, I still would like to see this get done for the betterment of our airport and betterment of our community. I believe that's all I have for you. I, I, my last little blurb there is opportunity, opportunity and opportunity. Our airport is a, is, is just ripe and ready for opportunity. And, and I think it's up to us to, to make that happen, to show that Pueblo attitude just a little bit further out east and let's get our airport in with that can-do mentality. So with that, I am here and available for any questions. Thank you folks for your time today.
President Aleph.
Yeah, thank you for that report. If you looked at the pictures, I, I found it very interesting. When you showed the pictures of the airport in 1948, I mean, can you go to it?
I'll give it a try.
It's like the second one. As if you didn't know. That could be taken today.
Parking lot change.
It looks like the same place. If you saw a picture of this, you would go. Even though if it didn't say Pueblo on it. Yeah, I think, you know, for years and years, I've always, I've always felt, and I know I've heard from other people in the community, that we're really wasting an amenity with Pueblo Airport because it has so much potential that we just like kind of let it sit out there and then we have, you know, we don't see it every day. We don't talk about it every day. But there's literally a lot of things that can be done, you know, and a lot of ways that we can utilize that airport and make it a, a bigger amenity to the community. So yeah, I'm with you. I think that, I think that getting that terminal done is, I mean, that's.
It would be huge.
Has to be done. And if the, if the government goes with that tower and we can get real creative. Obviously with, you know, the other thing that is very much a, a problem is our old hangars. And I mean, there's a lot of opportunity there because it's my understanding, not being a pilot or being in aviation, but it's my understanding that other communities really capitalize on their, their hangar space. And Colorado Springs, Denver to Fort Collins, there's no hangar space. All those airports are full. But yet we're sitting here with all this land and all this ability to, to capitalize on that type of, of business. And we're just not doing it. So, you know, I think we need to be aggressive and I think that if ideas like that came before city council, I think we're all about economic development and moving the community forward. And this is, this is an untapped gem that needs to be utilized in a whole different way than it has been. So I would be very supportive in anything that, that moved in that direction. And I appreciate your leadership and what you've done since you've come on at the airport. Yeah, let's think outside the box and make, make some stuff happen out there.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Latino.
Greg, I, I was, I was going to ask you, in terms of the private sector, private jets belonging to various individuals, corporations, et cetera. What, what is the capacity for that and where are we with that? Because I understand that Arapahoe, Arapahoe Airport now is, is fully occupied and there's, they're looking for places to, to bring their, their private jets, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So where are we with that?
So Counselor, I, I think what Counselor Aleph had, had brought up was, is a very astute point that there's just deficiency in hangar space throughout the nation. What Pueblo has going for it, as far as, you know, our, our mild weather, even through the winter, when Denver and Springs are getting socked in or Aspen Telluride are getting socked in. You know, they're looking for a place to set down out of the storm and Pueblo is generally sunny or, and or not as, not as stormy. So they sit down and they, they're looking for a place to go inside. Unfortunately, our, our hangar space is, is utilized. That's good that it's utilized because it, it shouldn't just be sitting empty waiting for someone to use it. If somebody wants it, it's available. But we don't have the capacity for those transient overnight hangar tenants or hangar opportunities because everything we have is being used regularly. And when you're talking about jet aircraft, they, you know, they have specific wingspans or specific tail heights. And those are almost specifically engineered and made hangar spaces that are specifically for that aircraft. We had the one on the far east side that Pedco had built for Frontier specifically, had the tail door on it. And they decided not to come to Pueblo at some point and it sat vacant for a while because it had no floor. But yeah, had we had a floor in there, that would be something that we could have potentially utilized for revenue, just to generate revenue for storm sheltering. Unfortunately, we just don't have large hangars of that capacity. Those are very expensive to build, so we don't have them just sitting there and available.
So are we putting a strategic plan together to, to do those kinds of things? Because again, having come from the large, large metropolitan area to large metropolitan areas, again, I, 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 I would think that with the fact that we, the, the fact that we have great, a great climate here and there are those opportunities there for us in terms of industry, that's be something that we would be really looking arduously at.
Certainly. And I will echo that sentiment and say, you know, Pueblo Airport's open for business and we find the right partner who wants to put a hangar down. You know, we can definitely help guide them through the processes, but it is a process. Not everybody can just say, hey buddy Greg, let me build on your, on your, on your property. Yeah, that's, that's not what my job is there. It's make sure it's done equitably, make sure it's done fairly and make sure all the boxes are checked, that they are going to get a contracted architect or, you know, a licensed architect, a licensed bonded contractor. It's not just, you know, their, their cousins are going to come and put up a lean to. No, it's going to be a actual viable infrastructure that's going to benefit the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious. Pueblo's airport is, I've seen C-130, if I got the right airport, land here. So it's built for military. Are we capitalizing on that military connection? We utilizing that more with the military?
So we do have a joint use agreement with the Air Force for them to utilize the airport for their training needs. We had a group come this last summer. The name escapes me off the top of my head. I apologize. But they were, they did a four-day, they did a four-day army training, mock training session where they brought everything in on a C-130, unloaded it out into our fields, put up a tent city. So yeah, the, the army is, is a great partner with us. The Air Force is a great partner with us. And we do get some funds for that. Of course, we could debate whether or not it's enough. But technically, because they gave us the land that they can come and do what they please there. We're very happy that they have a part, they believe in us as a partner to want to come do some of these things. It's not uncommon to see nightly C-130s come through and just utilize, there's infrared lights on our runway system too. So they'll turn off all the lights and to see these behemoths of aircraft just coming in dark, it, it is, it's quite exciting. It's rather impressive.
Also, in reference to, I used to, or maybe I shouldn't give this away, but I kind of like going to Vegas every now and then. I'm just thinking about the flights that used to have. I don't know if they still have them at Allegiant out of Colorado Springs. But for me, it seems that those flights out of here generating out of Pueblo to Vegas and that kind of stuff, any kind of red-eye flights, any kind of, you know, mystery flights that they used to have. This just seems to me like a hub that would be perfect, perfect for that kind of stuff, that kind of program. This just seems to me like a hub that would be perfect, perfect for that kind of stuff, that kind of program development going in those areas because. This town stays up late a lot. And I just want, has anybody thought about that?
So we, we've all thought about it. And of course, we would love to see planes coming in and out constantly all day long. But the reality of it is a business needs to see that it's valuable here. And I think we've turned the page here. Again, I, I am just overly ecstatic that we had five plus airlines out, wanted to do business with Pueblo. Had seen enough or heard enough about Pueblo and the opportunity that was here, that they put their names in, in, in a proposal, through a proposal. Wanting to do business with us, wanting to partner with us in our airport to provide that service. So I believe, I, I do believe that there's outside of a DOT subsidy, that an airline could be successful here. Almost a build it and they will come type of mentality. Let's get our infrastructure together. Let's build our hangars. Let's build our, let's upgrade our terminal. And show them we mean business and come to Pueblo and, and take a, take a shot on us as we'll take a shot on you and we'll build some partnerships that are. Going to be successful on both sides.
One last question. Airport passenger traffic, those numbers up, down, where we at?
They are currently down to some of the lowest I've seen in my thirteen years.
Do you know what those are right now currently?
Well, I talked about that implantment number for the FAA funding. We are just shy of four thousand implantments for this year. In twenty nineteen was probably one of our biggest years. Then we can go back to twenty eleven with Allegiant. Fourteen thousand implantments, twelve thousand implantments in, in twenty nineteen through just a commercial service airline provider.
How competitive are we with Springs?
Very. They probably would admit that, but we are very competitive, especially for our. When you think about Pueblo Airport does not only serve Pueblo community, but folks in Lahana, Lamar, Walsenburg. Not quite Elmo's, but Canyon City, you know, just all those outlying areas, those people travel too. And for them, somebody in Lamar or Lahana to think, I gotta go to Denver to catch a flight, you know, that's a two hour drive. Be there two hours early, pay for parking. I mean, all those things that if you just drove two hours to Pueblo. And you go through a real easy TSA line and you get inside of Denver's concourse to connect. Or you get to Las Vegas where you're hoping to go anyway, or you get to Phoenix and you connect further to LA. I think, again, the, I'll say this hundred times, I suppose, but. Pueblo Airport has that potential and opportunity. And I think, you know, we, we would do well to capitalize on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Boston.
I kind of just had a couple of questions in reference to GA. So you focusing a lot on these commercial airlines and whatnot. How much does GA bring into the airport currently?
So I do believe that GA is kind of the heartbeat of the airport because those are our local folks and the airport serves a purpose to them as well as far as. You know, some of us like to have the park in our neighborhood. Some of us like to have the golf course that we live by. Some people like to have an airport close by so that they can also partake in their activities and their hobbies. So GA is important. GA is very important to us. The, unfortunately, the, the reality of this is though, we rely dependently on those implantments to get those fundings to keep our airport. Safe, updated, and it is for them to use as well. But the measure of our success, unfortunately, right, wrong or indifferent, is skewed towards what the FAA will fund for us and keep us going. So as, as much as I, I love our GA guys and I want to keep them all happy and successful and, and feel like it's value to them. To have this airport. It's, it's, the needle moves with the FAA funding, unfortunately.
Okay. So when it comes to that open land that we've been talking about, with all the space we have to build new hangars, some of them are going up, which is good to hear. Is there any potential to possibly allow like businesses to come in and maybe put hangars out there? Is there any opportunity for us to maybe sell land if they're willing to build and take, take care of, maintain?
So the airport land itself has to remain city property per FAA requirements. Now, we can get into long-term ground leases and a, a private entity can build a structure. Which at the end of their twenty years, if they decide they want to move the structure off and, and return the ground back to its existing condition. You know, all that is, is acceptable. We have, in fact, we have a lot of folks out there who have built and they are in these long-term leases with us. I've had a few folks and some in our current GA who have come to me with these bright ideas and I'm very supportive of them. Let's do it. Yeah, let's do it. All I need you to do is bring me a stamp drawing architect plan, showing me what you want to do and, and I can move forward with this. And then the brakes stall, like all of a sudden, you know, again, it wasn't Greg, just wasn't going to let them build. No, there's processes here. I'm one of these guys who really enjoys what I do and I appreciate the city of Pueblo and I'm going to make sure that our. Our airport is handled correctly and that they have to go through some hoops because it's not going to be easy. Otherwise, everybody would be doing it. So not that I'm trying to stifle small business because I'm very supportive and appreciative of it, but it has to be done correctly.
And then the other thing I wanted to bring up is that huge World War Two hangar that we got out there. I know it's in terrible shape. You can't even be in there for more than like twenty minutes at a time. I hear that's like one of three left in the nation.
I had heard that too, but I don't know that for a fact.
I was gonna say, it seems kind of like maybe something could be done with that, maybe.
The museum looked into getting it on the historical registry. I know we somewhat have to be careful with that because then it requires some additional upkeep, maintenance, et cetera. It is, half of it is currently, I guess, well, for lack of a better term, call it condemned because there is some asbestos mediation that needs to be done in there. But the hangar itself is in great shape. The steel structure is good. The doors are a pain in the butt. They get stuck regularly. It takes more than one person to open them up. So we are trying our best not to utilize it. We do have plans for it. We're going to power wash it and utilize it for the airshow coming in next year. The Thunderbirds will be inside of it. Once we clean it out and spit shine it a little bit. But otherwise, we have no real hard plans for it beyond that first airshow event.
Okay. And then I hear there's rumors that the races may not have continued with their current contract like they, I didn't, wasn't it going to be down in? Somewhere in New Mexico. Isn't that the location they chose?
So the races, if you're referring to the Reno air races, yeah, they chose Roswell, New Mexico as their home. I don't know anything about their. Contractual obligation to Roswell. Please share with me though. I mean, I'm very interested in how it goes down there. We, I mean, everybody in this room should be proud of, of the, the. Proposal we put forward based on, on behalf of our community. Why they didn't choose us is still a head scratcher to me, but. We saw what we are capable of and I think we're going to capitalize on that with our airshow.
If there's potential for any type of return, would you be open arms?
Of course, yeah. The, the discussion, of course, would have to start with the, the, you know, the, the leadership and see if it, it makes sense for us to support an event like that. So. I do see that I'm way over on my time. Thank you guys for your time. Is there anything else I can?
Counselor Flores.
I just had a couple of questions. When are you going to make a decision on the carrier of the three remaining carriers?
So it is not our decision to make. It is the Department of Transportation's decision. It's there, they are, they hold the purse strings for the subsidy funding. So it'll be up to them. Our opinion has been heard. The mayor has had, had supported Breeze Airways. They asked us to continue with a ranking of who we would like second and third. So we provided them all the information that they have asked for. It's in their court.
You know, it's, we're so used to thinking that we have to fly to Springs or Denver. Say we want to go to Los Angeles, we think about going to Denver and then catching the plane to. But we could accomplish the same thing by flying to Vegas and then to Los Angeles. So we've got. And the fact that there was fourteen thousand, did you say deployment? That, that, that was probably eighty percent people wanting to go to Vegas. So I think that location probably would dictate activity more than it would going to Springs or Denver. And, and then going to Phoenix, there you have another possibility of going from there to Dallas or from there to.
So one of the things we, we thought it was be a challenge was be, would be to convince the DOT that we are still connecting folks through Phoenix, even if they wanted to go to Washington DC. Or to Florida. Yeah, you're going backwards to go forwards, but it is still technically connectivity. So we thought we'd get a little bit of resistance from that, but for the most part, the data has shown through a survey and through just industry. Contacts that we have, that the majority of Puebloans who get, take a flight to Denver and, and. Change on to somewhere else, that connect, excuse me, connect to somewhere else, they end up out west. Portland, San Francisco, Las Vegas and San Diego were some of the bigger. Destinations for folks who went through even Southern Airways connectivity, you know, they, they are able to share that data with us. So we felt like focusing West was not, not really unheard of. Or it, it was something that was going to be overly detrimental to our community.
What, what is the name of the, the, it was called DOS Aviation. What are they called now?
CAE now. CAE, yeah. Canadian Aviation Education, I believe.
Cause they're, they're going stronger.
They sure are. They are super, super busy.
Anyway, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pajosa. And you do a good job out there. I see the grant money is coming through all the time so we could make improvements out there. Counselor Martinez, did you have something? I see you're back on.
Yeah, Greg, hey, congrats on the Blue Angels event. I'm really excited for that. Do you have any anticipated numbers on how many?
I'm sorry, Counselor, you were breaking up there. Did you ask how many participants or how many? How many folks we were expecting for? It actually is. So we're anticipating probably sixty thousand would be a good, strong estimate on, on what we could anticipate. Over two days, six zero.
Yeah, hey Greg, that's going to be so exciting.
Oh, we're, we're stoked. Yeah, we're ready to rock and roll. So thank you.
Is that everything, Counselor Martinez?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So I, I see the grant funding come through. I guess we just, as a community, need to plead to the community that once you get a new airline in there. That, you know, we start utilizing the service. I think that people forget all about it. And hopefully it's a service because I do know that there are some people that have committed lately to using the services, but they haven't panned through for us. You know, and they've canceled their flights and so forth. So you know, it's kind of a, you know, build it and they'll come, but we got, we gotta make it, you know, to where. Cause I've, I've had people planning to fly out that day and be canceled on. And so not to criticize you for it. It's, nobody's using it enough, you know, and so the plea needs to be to the community also. In order to get this done, we need their business.
Sure. So on that same note, these airlines that have approached us to wanting to be partners with us, we've had that topic of conversation come up. I mean, almost immediately, it's, you know, we're, we're in a hole. So build it and they will come through, but we need to rebuild it too and then bring them back. So that, that is much, that is in all of these airlines mindsets that from day one or prior, once they get awarded, they'll have months to get their feet under them. Or get to where their first day of flights will be. They'll have time to, and we're, we are very strongly suggesting they spend some money in the community to. Advertise that it's a, you know, new, bigger, better. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Chairwoman, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I'd like to say something, something come up.
Okay.
You said sixty thousand? You're expecting sixty thousand?
Over two days. Yes, sir. It's, it's a, it's a very aggressive estimate, but that's what we're hoping to, folks to sixty thousand to come to the airshow.
Okay. All right. I'm hoping that's the case. I really am because I, I have my doubts. But in, in addition to that. If we're going to work with somebody outside of Denver. Then Phoenix is a place for us to be going because that's where a lot of our people go to begin with in, in, in the fall. Or in the winter and spring. So again, I'm hoping those kinds of things are being looked at. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pajosa. Have a good rest of your evening. Okay, so next we will be going into exec. No, liquor and marijuana licensing with our clerk, Ms. Stoller.
I, I'm setting the timer for myself. Here we go. You're the only one that can see my hands. Okay, so it's come to our attention that the majority of the larger cities within the state of Colorado. And a number of the smaller ones as well, as well have switched to using a hearing officer instead of a community board for the licensing of liquor. And or marijuana, if those communities have marijuana. So tonight, I'd like to discuss the current setup for the city of Pueblo. Take a look at what the switch to a hearing officer might look like within the city. And then discuss some of the advantages and disadvantages that we've heard about from these other municipalities. So in order to get a liquor or marijuana license currently, an applicant must complete a number of steps. And one of those main steps is to go before the liquor or marijuana authority during a public hearing. Where the members of the public are able to testify as to their concerns or support for such a license. Currently, we have two five-member boards that are made up of volunteers that make up the liquor authority and the marijuana authority respectively. The liquor board meets two times a month and the marijuana board meets one time a month to process applications. To hold public hearings and to impose sanctions if needed. With Mayor Graham's support, we're proposing to change from these two volunteer member boards of five members each. To using our municipal judge as a hearing officer for both the liquor and marijuana licenses. We've spoken to Judge, Judge Dunford and he's agreeable to taking on this responsibility. So instead of having three separate meetings a month, the judge would hold hearings every other week. And both liquor and marijuana matters would be able to be brought forward within the same meeting. So this is our current liquor and marijuana licensing process. As you can see, there are several steps where the applicant comes before the liquor authority or the marijuana authority, which is typically during the hearing phase. I want to emphasize that this process would not change. The only difference that would be instead of coming before the five-member volunteer board of citizens. They would come before the municipal judge who is knowledgeable about liquor and marijuana laws as well as legal processes and proceedings. So you can see the areas where the authority is in parentheses there. Those are the places. Where the authority would be substituted. So the liquor and marijuana licensing authorities are not policymaking boards, but they act in a quasi judicial manner. Primarily to consider whether to grant new licenses and also to determine if a violation of the code has occurred. And if so, to impose administrative sanctions within the licensing authority and state adopted guidelines. With the conversion to a hearing officer acting as a licensing authorities, the same legal standards would apply for approval for a new license. Additionally, the legal standards would be limited to the following considerations. One, whether the needs and desires of the neighborhood are being met. And two, as to the moral character of the applicant. Notification to the public of all the hearings would be provided in the same manner. And any member of the public may still attend and testify as with before. Any additional sanctions that were imposed for violations of the code are based on a set of written guidelines that are consistent with previous cases in the state guidelines. And because the licensing authorities act as quasi judicial bodies, a hearing officer is kind of uniquely qualified to analyze the evidence. Apply it to the required criteria to reach a well reasoned, supported and defensible decision for the city. And the appeal process for any aggrieved applicants or licensees or opponents to a new license will also remain unchanged. So these are the top twelve largest cities in Colorado. Pueblo falls in around number ten. With a hundred and ten thousand in population between Greeley with one thirteen and Centennial with a hundred and six and Boulder with a hundred and five. You can see it's definitely the trend in the larger cities, which therefore have more liquor and possibly marijuana licenses to issue. To move to this type of system. In case you're wondering, I use the larger cities in Colorado because. I wanted the majority of the comparison to be with municipalities that had the same or more number of liquor licenses as the city of Pueblo. Because assuming that Pueblo would continue to grow, that would be the direction we would hope to be going. All the clerks that we spoke with during this research, who have switched from a board to a judge hearing officer, were pleased with the switch. And they offered these advantages and disadvantages. Some of the advantages include an increase in knowledge of liquor licensing laws as well as legal processes and procedure. And a minimized risk of appeal due to this increase. And while we incredibly appreciate the effort that many of our board members have gone through to learn the liquor and marijuana codes. Including our local code, we understand that serving on this board is voluntary and not a board member's full-time job. But this would be part of the municipal judge, judge's full-time job as a hearing officer. And he would have attended law school and passed the bar to prove his understanding of legal matters. Cost savings was another advantage. In analyzing the city of Pueblo's process. We found that there would be a cost savings by designating a hearing officer to serve as the liquor and licensing and marijuana authorities. Currently, board meetings cost the city significant resources. An assistant city attorney, a deputy city clerk, liquor licensing coordinator and facility staffs are all. An assistant city attorney, a deputy city clerk, liquor licensing coordinator and facility staffs are all compensated to stay past working hours for the meetings, which take place three times a month at City Hall. And each of the five members of the liquor licensing authority are also compensated per meeting. There are also time obligations for the city clerk in the mayor's office in interviewing and selecting new board members each year, advertising to fill the positions and training the new board members. Selecting a single hearing officer would save the city all these resources by reducing the need for training, appointments, uh, compensatory time and overtime and meeting time. Additional reasons include that a hearing officer is more business friendly in that it results in an overall simplification of the process and efficiency of review. It allows for more flexibility with the hearing schedule and would be at a better time for liquor licensees in particular, which is in the morning rather than the evening during their high business hours. Uh, and meetings would not need to be canceled for the lack of a quorum. Uh, the only disadvantage these municipalities cited in the switch was the loss of citizen participation, specifically the presentation, the participation of the board members themselves, as regular members of the public would have the same ability to participate in the hearing process. Uh, when we discussed this with our current board members, they were mostly supportive of this change and agree that it's difficult for a volunteer board to have this specialized knowledge that is often required in these situations. By transitioning to a liquor license authority to a hearing officer, the city would provide a more expedious, efficient, fair, consistent and business-friendly process for the businesses wishing to obtain a city of Pueblo liquor or marijuana license and for addressing violations of the liquor and marijuana codes. While the city could lose some citizen participation aspect in the current, uh, license authority, it would also minimize the risk associated with the lack of specialization of such boards and the risk of improper agendas and biases. Additionally, because the liquor license authority is a quasi judicial authority with a narrow, uh, discretion, having a hearing officer would minimize the city's risk of appeal to the district court due to insufficient record or improper legal analysis. Um, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions from council? Any comments?
What are the next steps?
Uh, the mayor had indicated that, uh, if council was interested in moving forward, that we would look at making this change, uh, for the beginning of next year. So we would look to, uh, bring an ordinance forward to council that would put the ordinance, um, in ac- action date as, uh, January first, twenty twenty-five.
How do the current board members feel?
I have only spoken to a few of them. I'm going to be attending their board meetings, um, today or this week. They have one on Wednesday and one on Thursday. Um, but so far the, the questions and, uh, reactions that I've gotten back have been positive and agreeing that they don't necessarily have the kind of, uh, knowledge base, uh, for some of these decisions.
Uh, Counselor Flores.
Very quickly, I like the idea. I think we could be more efficient. It also removes, uh, how difficult it is for us to get good people to come and, and apply. It becomes a real cumbersome approach. So I like the idea. I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Counselor, uh, President Ayla.
Yeah, when I was looking at the report, I thought, well, you know, if Boulder and everybody up north is doing it, it must be a screwed up deal. And that we should probably be against it. I would just caution everybody that when you, when you, uh, I think one of the best things about government is when you have community involvement. And when community is involved, it seems to be better, in my opinion. I understand the legal aspects, but there's literally a deputy city attorney or somebody in the room, just like with the city council. Obviously, city council doesn't have, uh, uh, background in law and know everything there is to know about, uh, uh, city law, but yet we muddle through and we muddle through with the expertise of, of the attorneys. So I think that, uh, uh, you know, on the surface, it sounds good. It sounds good, but there are, I see, your disadvantages. I, I would just be leery about eliminating, uh, there's something good about five people making a decision as opposed to one.
And, and the only thing that I would say to that is that specifically a, a judge would know when they can allow themselves to be swayed by the arguments in the room, wh- whereas the board doesn't always necessarily know that. So, I mean, they can have like, you know, impassioned people, but if everything is legally in order, there's really nothing that the board can do aside from grant the license. And so being able to, you know, have those discussions with the board, um, in the past, not with our current board, but in the past, like, has been difficult for, and we've had to hold, you know, urgent executive sessions like in the middle of the meeting because we can see the direction they're trying to go and it legally is not feasible, um, and would not be defensible in any type of way.
But it's safe to say that the municipal judge isn't a, isn't an expert in liquor law either, right? He'd literally.
But he does know how to read the state statutes.
Huh?
He does know how to read the state statutes and how to.
Everybody does.
No.
Okay, so you're assuming that nobody can read a state statute other than an attorney?
No, I'm not assuming that because I read the state statutes and I'm not an attorney. Uh, but I also help a lot of citizens that don't know, understand how to read the state statutes, especially when it comes to how to put to- put together a recall petition, how to put together, uh, an initiative petition. So I know that there are a lot of people that do not understand.
An advocate for the process, once again, the cit- the deputy city attorney is at the meetings who can interpret or give an opinion based upon the, the statute. So that's all I'm saying. Thanks.
So legally, a judge can't sway from the law, but a board member could do what they feel they want to do because they're on the board. Even we, we can do that here on council if we want to risk, you know.
Yes, but they, they, and they would, uh, risk being sued and we would lose.
Correct, correct, yes. And so it's nice that when we're dealing with legal, uh, matters that an attorney or a judge handles those legal matters rather than giving it to the, um, just the general public. Uh, because I've sit on, I'm, I've sat on boards and it seems to me like, um, I don't, I feel like the boards don't always have a grasp of what they're obligated to do. And, um, and so they, they're questioned. They get, even with an attorney there, they still have questions, um, and questions and, and, and they're confused by some of their decisions. So I, I'm looking forward to seeing something put together, brought forward.
I have something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Gomez, I just expect you to go. Sorry.
I was watching a news show a couple nights ago. I think it was channel thirteen. If their numbers are correct, they said they see an increase of homeless here in the city by seventy-five percent. That's news to me, but that's what they're stating. And I'm just curious, we have the numbers in reference to substance abuse. We tie substance abuse and, you know, with all the drugs besides marijuana, I don't know how they split that up. But the number of people in reference to the DUI situation that's serious here in Pueblo. Do we have those kind of numbers so we can figure out where we're at?
The police department may have those numbers. Uh, this is specifically for the licensing, so we're dealing with the businesses. Um, not the sales and not the consumers.
I'd like to find those numbers out though, just for my own edification.
The police department may have those numbers. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Well, I guess we're getting ready to go into executive.
Madam Chair, for the purpose of, I'd move that we go into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators. Under CRS, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent E, parent I, and to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of any real, personal or other property interest pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent A, and more specifically described as discussions related to the Pope Block Building. Second.
All those in favor?
I am.
All those opposed? The eyes have it.
The date is September thirteenth at seven forty seven P M and we adjourned the work session meeting.